Start off with the roll call. You said Mike Bollier is not here tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Mike Sharon?
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti?
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson? Pam Farrington?
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Fralino? Drew Galfin?
Drew Galfin, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks?
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck?
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Got Soyeat? And Heather Summer from Hebron. So if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And one nation, under God. Brings us to public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at the BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to make public comment? Anyone online who would like to make public comment? Okay. So we're at the point now if there's any items on the agenda that we would like to add or delete? And that will bring us... I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I just said, "None here, Heather."
Okay, so that brings us to the student reports. Are any of the students there?
Both Oliver and Eva are here.
They both are. Okay. So let's go first with Ava. Oh, there you are.
Hello, everyone. So first of all, I would like to report that senior prom tickets are beginning to sell starting this weekend, I mean this Friday. Also, we have recently had an empty bowls event where students sold like pottery bowls and soup and tickets. You could buy tickets at the door and it was a great fundraiser. And it went really well. Everyone got to enjoy a nice bowl of soup and some bread. Also, the volleyball went to the Capitol last week, which was a great accomplishment and super exciting for them. And recently, this past Friday and Saturday, there was a Percy Jackson musical hosted by the high school. It was a great hit. So many people came. It was amazing. I got to watch and it was so much fun. Also, quarter four just began, so I'm sure you could imagine. Everyone's getting ready for the end of the year. Seniors are starting to announce their college commitments, which is super exciting. And which is being posted on the Instagram. There's a brand sort of after grad Instagram where people are posting their commitments. And also recently, the band just went to Broadway to see Hades: The Town last Wednesday, which was super exciting for them. I mean, going to Broadway is always super exciting. So yeah, it's really exciting, April, for everyone.
Okay, great. Oliver?
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot on the agenda too. Just sort of there's some like test question I'd like to branch into. SAT scores just came back this last Thursday. Big time for a lot of students. PSAT scores come back earlier this month for sophomore. There's another event for the future for these kids. Junior's actually at NGFS Day this week. They're prepared to do it. And then as the AP exams are looming, it's the first week of May, so there's some anticipation for that to be over pretty soon. And then we have our all-town jazz concert, which is this Thursday on Fifth. Very exciting. I'd like to bring your special attention to the work language SEAL Fidelity scores that just came back. And I would like to congratulate all the students who were able to pass and get their SEAL Fidelity. And I personally, as a Latin student, would like to acknowledge Emily Grow for her achievement in Latin. Students in the aerospace engineering class were able to see a helicopter visit on last Friday, April 19. They're able to learn more about helicopter flight and have a hands-on setting. I know the students were really appreciative of it. And the last thing I can say is junior prom is coming up with May fourth. Everyone's very excited and anticipating May fourth. Bye, Heather.
Where is the prom being held?
At Glasson Bay. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact name. It's at Glasson Bay. I think it's on the very corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Does anybody have any questions for Ava or Oliver?
Just a comment that Percy Jackson was a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it really was. I mean, the singing was amazing. I was like super impressed.
Great. Okay. So that brings us to the BOE chair report. Just a couple of things. March 27th, they Ram hosted a career fair and they had industries represented by insurance, engineering, hospitality, finance, just to name a few. I was able to go and sit in on a couple of the sessions where, you know, the folks presented what they did at work. Kids had an opportunity to ask questions. And then following that, I went into the auditorium where band and chorus were showing off to some of the grade school students what it would be like, the kind of music that they would do once they get to the middle school and high school, kind of encouraging the sixth graders to continue their journey in either band or choir. And it was great. I was really, you could hear, when the band was playing, you could hear a pin drop. And, you know, they were just, the kids were so engaged. They got so excited about the music. I really, really enjoyed that opportunity. And then, oh, I guess, let's see. There was also a concert, March 26th. I was not able to attend that. And then Friday, the 27th, the chorus and band students showcased their talents for the elementary school. That was what I just mentioned. So that's all that I have. Colin?
So thanks. People have touched on a lot of the things that I was going to talk about, but I'll just add maybe a little bit more detail to some of the things that were mentioned. I was able to go to the Empty Bowls fundraiser as well. Just so everybody knows, that's a fundraiser event. It didn't take place last year. I think historically, it's done every couple of years. And what they do is they get students, staff, local volunteers, and artisans to actually throw the bowls. And then we do all the kilning of the artwork. And then when the people buy tickets, they get to choose a bowl. And as Ava said, they get to enjoy soup and bread, and I certainly enjoyed that. The thing that I did want to share was the fundraiser raised over $3,000, which was donated to local food shelters, which I just, again, it's a great event. And I appreciate the work of a lot of people in the district. And it's spearheaded really by our arts department. They did a great job with it. Just another thing that I wanted to mention too was the middle school hosted what they call a coffee house. It's kind of a little bit of a precursor prior to the Evening of the Arts, which is coming up on May 30th. I just sent the board an email about that. If you're interested in attending Evening of the Arts and you're able to do it, I would highly recommend it. It is, student artwork is displayed from the elementary schools, from the middle school, from the high school. Students have a, basically can choose what they want to perform and set up in the cafeteria. And they sing songs and play musical instruments. And then it's the culminating activity of the Evening of the Arts is a concert in the auditorium. A great event. It was one of the first things that I did when I came into the district, the spring that I was hired. And a great event, but the coffee house was fantastic as well. I also want to make sure that I commend Emma Filosa, Bailey McKeeran, and Carl Giansis, who was the production crew for Percy Jackson, The Lightning Thief. I was able to attend. I saw Scott there on opening night on Friday evening. It was a great show, as you said, and just a testament to the many opportunities that our students have. And I just appreciate the work of the staff. And I want to congratulate the students on their tremendous success for all the work they did, both on and off the stage, to put on such a great production. And then the last thing that I'll just mention, and Eric, if you want to queue it up. So Oliver mentioned the helicopter visit to the high school. And instead of me trying to summarize what it was, I thought I would let our journalism students, who put together in about two hours, which was quite remarkable, and actually they produced this and put it out. So we're just going to play what they put together for a news story.
Today, April 19th, at 10:00 a.m., a helicopter landed on the athletic field at Ram High School. Earlier this week, helicopter pilot Steve Weir visited the class to speak about the science and technology of helicopter flight.
I would just say I'm glad to have this opportunity to share this with the kids from the aerospace class and other kids from school. Just, you know, it would be my hope that if there's somebody who has that interest in learning to be a pilot or learning more about aircraft, that maybe this sparks somebody's interest to take it to the next step and maybe take some flying lessons or get their license.
This landing provided an opportunity for students in the class to observe what they've been studying up close and in greater depth.
And he spoke to the class about how, what the helicopter was used for, a little bit more about the machinery of it.
Some of the other classes were out there, including the Kinder Rama class and Ms. Penrose's World History One class, who was learning about World War I. Unexpectedly, superintendent Colin McNamara got to ride along.
It was really neat. It was like, it just, all of a sudden, you're just literally off the ground. And you look and you're, it's a little nerve-wracking at first, but he's an excellent pilot. And I took some really good videos of flying over the building and flying over the high school. It was really cool. I guess I expected it to be more like an amusement park ride where you're kind of like, your stomach kind of lurches a little bit. Didn't, it was super smooth. Just, it was loud. There was a lot of wind coming in, like there's small cracks in the door, not cracks, but just intentional spaces. And windy and loud, but we had headphones on and it wasn't overwhelming loud, but just, again, just a really neat experience altogether.
Reporting from the Ram Athletic Field, this has been Nali Benito with Jeremy Kushner and Danan Page for Rambler News.
So I'll say to you guys what I said to my wife that evening. I said, "You know, being a superintendent can be stressful and tough, but there are certain perks to the job." And that was one of the perks of the job. Steve was kind enough to give me the ride and it was definitely one of the coolest experiences I've had. So, but it was great and I appreciate Eileen Lastrana, who's actually here tonight, complete for unrelated reason for working collaboratively with Steve to give that hands-on experience and up-close-and-personal experience to the students, because really, it's for them. And again, it was just, it was fantastic. So thanks, Eileen, for making that happen. And that concludes my superintendent report.
Okay, well, that will bring us right into the student spotlight for the architectural design presentation.
Yeah, so as I said, you know, prior to even me knowing about the helicopter visit, I'd been having some communication with Eileen Lastrana. I had shared with the board earlier on in the year how some of our architectural design students had gone to the Connecticut Home Builders Association, I think, and actually competed and represented Ram. And I thought it would be good to highlight the work that they're doing and Eileen's doing in the architectural design class. So I'll turn it over. Eileen, you and the kids want to come up? And the podium is right there. The mic is on, so.
I put together a little PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Oh, that's... I did spot.
You might want to just be right behind the microphone so that the...
Oh.
It goes out to who's on the internet, not necessarily in here.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Eileen Lastrana. And I inherited the architectural design program probably about four years now. I'm not exactly sure. From our construction teacher. I was very happy to be able to teach this course. I've had some experience with architecture with kitchens and bathrooms, because my husband is a kitchen and bathroom modeler. So it was kind of nice to be able to translate what I've done with him and teach the kids how to do some CAD as well and remodel kitchens and design kitchens. So the first slide talks about the course description. You can see that online as well. Just a little bit about it. It's only a half-year class, so there's very little time to do a whole lot in the class. If you look at the syllabus, I have four small units. The next slide. The first one is architectural styles. I'm having a hard time seeing that. Residential construction, your career, and then residential design. The first unit, architectural styles. The kids research different styles themselves and they come back with two different PowerPoints to teach the class about different styles. So say if I have 18 students, 36 different styles will be represented. And they, one of the descriptors that they have to do are the three features for each style, which they then parlay into creating a guess-the-style model. Having had no modeling experience, they find cardboard boxes or whatever supplies I have laying around and they put together usually just a facade. They don't have to build a whole house. And they label three different features of that house and the rest of the class has to guess what the style is. And the winner gets a prize. So they are able to turn around and learn the styles that way. And the second unit goes by that fast. They learn residential construction activities. First, they start off labeling the roof and framing members so they know what the proper terminology is. From there, they create posters. They do the research on different styles of roofs. And just driving down here, Martin Road here in Hebron, there are so many different architectural styles and roofs. Every single house is so unique. So I encourage the kids to take a drive. I say, "You're going to notice whether, when you're sitting in the backseat or in the passenger seat, that you, 'Oh, I know that style. I know that style from doing this.'" And they create posters for the class and we leave them up for all the classes. The student chose to do a gambrel, which of course is very popular in, out here in Region Eight. And so they present that way. And from there, I think they just go right into creating a model of a shed with different frame. Well, they all do the same model, actually. And then they label it. So they, I like to hear the, they work in teams. I like to hear what they're saying and they're calling the side framing, they're calling them studs. And I'm hearing about joists and the rafters. So I know that they're connecting it by using their hands. And this is just a cute picture of one of my teams. And then we leave those out and display them for a little while. And we revisit them back in Unit Four. So Unit Three, moving on, we learned a little bit about the careers involved, whether you choose architecture or civil engineering. Civil engineering, they're, we don't teach that here any longer. We used to at one point before I came, but we've shortened the course just to have architecture. And so they have to choose, first they have to research the different, you know, the different careers. And then they have to choose which one they are going to be 10 years in the future. So whether or not they want to choose, some of them have to choose civil engineering. They fill out a questionnaire. What college did they go to? Where do they work? What's their salary? What's the hardest courses they had to take in that college? And from there, they do a fun little activity. This is prior. They sit at my computer and we do, I think we use Google Meet, and they do a fun little podcast. See the next picture. And they get to pretend that they're either-or and interview each other. One is the host and the other as the career, themselves in the future at their chosen career. So that's a fun activity that they usually like. And from there, we move into Unit Four. We revisit our shed. They learn some, they learn Autodesk Revit, which is a very robust industry-based software. And they actually recreate their shed and make a working drawing of it. And they also learn the elements and principles of design that I said they're going to hear those words if they take any art classes as well. It's a big crossover. So that's just a picture they took in the school when I sent them on a field trip to go take photos of architecture in our school. And from there, they actually, oh, tomorrow, we actually, with Earth Day, we have a guest visitor. Her name's Emma Gulat and she comes from Shawma in Rhode Island, which is a big construction company. She is an architect and a civil, I'm an architect and a management, construction management major. So she has both pieces. And she comes, she's young too. She's in her twenties. And she comes and talks to them about her green building and what she does with Shawma, which is also in Connecticut as well as Rhode Island. And so she's very interesting. And they, they're going to meet her tomorrow. For their final, they do a 3D print of their, whatever their final project is. I believe this one was a dream house. They're given constraints of, and criteria of maybe 3,000 square feet. And they have to build a house that they're very interested in making. And they do their research and they, this was one student's dream house. And then she, so they 3D print them. And then they give us a little walkthrough demo. If you click that video and just fast-forward it like midway or so, you can see she takes us through the house and you can see each room in a kind of virtual reality, which is kind of neat. She's zoomed in a little too close. But this is probably from three years ago and she really had the colors picked out. That white and black is very popular now. So that's, that's their final. They come their final day. Instead of taking a test, they do their presentation. And then that's it for the class. And some students say, "That's not enough." So I have students that choose to go above and beyond. There's a contest in February that it's the Home Builders and Remodelers Association puts on in Hartford. And last year, I had a student that, well, I had a couple of students that wanted to attempt to make a model. I know when I was student teaching at Glasson Berry High, they used to do that. They'd just say, "Kids, go home, make your model, bring it in." And I thought, with all the equipment I had, I said, "Why don't you come in during your study halls, after school, lunch periods, and we can, I can help you with the equipment and maybe we can do something a little better than just cutting, you know, poster board and making a model." So I had a student try it last year and since, I think it was our first year there, she won Rookie of the Year. They go against schools like Sims Berry that have three years of architecture. I don't know if it's three years or just three courses, but they did very well. I think their designs really stood up to any designs that were there at the contest. And our materials were very unique as well. So I think our kids did a great job. They really held their own amongst these bigger, fancier, maybe schools. Well, maybe not. Maybe they just had more opportunities than us, right? Because they had three, three years in a row. But as you see from their designs, they're going to talk a little bit about them. They did very well and they really held their own. They did a great job. And it's some late nights. We had some stressful periods of machines running and me trying to teach, but it was fun. And I encourage them to do it. Come back again next year if you're interested. And I'll encourage my current students as well. And that's about it. This is the student from last year who won. And she's actually at, is it Rochester? No. Rhode Island? One of the schools in Rhode Island for architecture. Can't think of one name of that. In Newport?
Rhode Island School of Design.
No.
Roger Williams.
Roger Williams. Thank you. Yeah, she's at Roger Williams. And I had another student tell me today, stopped me in the hall and said she's going for architecture as well. So that's really exciting. And I love that I'm getting girls in the engineering classes. I don't get a whole lot of girls signing up. Angela, for instance, she joined me sophomore year for her first time in my classroom for architecture. And she has since taken three engineering classes and she's going off to major in engineering next year. So if I can use this as a feeder program, for some reason, girls aren't intimidated to take the architectural classes. So it's a great feeder for the engineering classes. So that's about it. And if you have any questions, you know my email. It's the same as everybody's at the school. Feel free to email me or ask away now. And maybe you guys want to come up and show them your models and maybe you can ask them questions. So you're seeing the back view there. It's not as exciting. If you want to get up and walk around, you can.
Okay, I can start with mine. So I was very out in the ordinary. All of them had to have a, like be on some type of water or something like a river or lake. So I decided to do a pond, I think. Mostly everyone decided to do some kind of like lake or pond. Mine, I went on Google and I just started like researching like random houses that kind of looked like they deserved to be on with a lake. I came up with this design and it had like thick constraints. Like it had to be like 2,000 square feet. I had to have three bedrooms and like every bedroom had to have a bathroom with a shower, tubs. So this design is not the same I found online. There's a lot of changes, a lot of, very, a lot of changes. Like the windows were white first and then I changed them to black. And the driveway was not that color at all. I changed it probably 10 minutes before we left. So there's a lot. And the windows, they probably took it on like four, three times on the 3D printer to actually get it to pop in exact. Straw and I took a Sharpie and I colored it also 10 minutes before we left. And I put a little Lego bucket to make it look like a gutter. So there's a lot of like little gadgets that I use. I use like a little Lego bike to make it like like the great building. But it was fun and I learned a lot from Revit. Like Revit was like, you got like the basics of engineering, like how to build a first-story house, windows, doors. And then like you get into Revit City and you can like look up all these doors and like put different doors and you can put different windows. And then you get into like the siding, you can change the colors. So Google was probably my best friend. I looked up everything. I didn't know how to make solar panels or put like the roof or make the stairs. There was a lot of trial and error, but I think it turned out pretty good. And this is what it looked like. Didn't win anything, but I think it did pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, so I thought it was kind of fun how when using Revit, it's really mathematically accurate to what the real thing would be. Everything here should be to scale to some extent. And so with the tools that Lastrina gave us, we were able to put that into a laser cutting software. And all the walls are coming straight from Revit just out of foam board. And so I wanted to point out that I think we were the only three to use our respective materials in the contest. Angela used laser engraving for the wood and then me and Julia both used stucco walls, which nobody else in the contest ended up doing. So we were very creative.
Yeah, and I think it was really important that especially Alex and I, we started pretty late, like trying to decide what we were doing. Especially I did too, because we sort of did it together. And I had just taken the class, like I just took it this year and I ended it, what, in January, February? So it was a pretty short amount of time, but I'm pretty proud of what we've done. And overall, it was such, it was really an exciting experience though, because I feel like you don't get access to that many materials that often. Like this is, Lastrana helped so much. She, oh, she bought a lot of the material. She helped out a lot. I mean, I wouldn't be able to do it without these guys either. I mean, the trees, the grass, like really a bunch of those things, almost everything, was helped out with other people. And I, it was a fun experience, but I definitely could not have done it without the people.
She stayed pretty early.
Yeah. Nine o'clock, I think. It was pretty late.
So what is Revit?
Renewables Fusion, it's cloud-based. Autodesk. It's a lot of architectural and CAD-based and mechanical as well. It's industry-based. If you were going to just go buy Revit, not being a student or a teacher, it would cost probably $3,000 for the software. But with the student ID, they are able to use it for free and it's industry-based. But with the student ID, they are able to use it for, for free and it's industry-based. So it's, you know, it's on their skills, it should be on their resumes when they graduate even. You spend a lot of time getting to know it.
They all look terrific, nice work by each of you. So I know, I know how much time it takes to put one. That's impressive. I did one of these when I was a kid and.
So you mentioned that you chose the stucco, which was unique. Curious to know what made you choose the stucco as opposed to a different material for?
For me, I've always been a big fan of Floridian architecture and that's really prominent.
Yeah.
Floridian architecture, so I just decided to stick with it for what I built.
Yeah, I always liked more like old English, like cottage types, like Tudor houses. So I really liked those types. So I was kind of interested about how to make that. And we did spend a lot of time figuring out how to make that too.
Yeah.
We used like plaster, water, paint, like we.
YouTube.
A lot of, yeah, we used YouTube a lot, a lot of thought.
And there were some iterations going on as well, right? Your finished product wasn't what you originally started with. So Alex's in particular was much fancier when he started. But we ran into trouble with angles and, and making everything meet. So we, we were under a time crunch, so we had to iterate, right? Hello? Yeah.
You guys think all in on each of your models you put in? I'd be curious from like, from design to completion.
Well, I designed mine during the quarter or like the semester when I started. So actually, this was my final project. So I spent, I don't know, probably like, I started at the beginning or before end of winter break, so probably like maybe up two weeks like designing it, but that's just because I had a lot of class time to do it. But after that building, I think what we did like, like a week and a half of actually building it. Like that's the only time we had because we started pretty late. And a lot of people that were doing the contest, they started like months before, like maybe like a year.
Maybe they had a whole semester to build it.
Yeah.
I think they built, from what I understand, they build it with hardboard first to make sure everything fits. And then they go to the final building materials. So we didn't have that luxury. And Angela, you started from scratch the year after your original design, which didn't fit the constraints, so.
Yeah, I really did mine.
She spent a lot more time.
I probably took like two months on it just because I'm only doing it in school. Like during my third period, I would come and then I would stay. I get out after sixth, I would stay for seventh and eighth days I didn't have work. So I went to mine in school, so that's probably why it took me so long. But if I like went home and did it, it probably like took me maybe a month or so.
Just commitment.
Yeah.
Dedication is put into that, it's nice to see cooperation.
Looks wonderful.
Yeah, you guys are very talented.
Really great work.
Well, thank you guys so very much for coming in and sharing your stuff with us. You can leave it there if you want, we'll make sure it gets back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys being here. Thanks, parents. For sharing.
Okay, so this brings us to 9.1, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular March 18th, 2024 Board of Education meeting?
So moved, Scott, so yeah, hand over.
Great, do we have a second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nothing? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, the motion passes. That brings us to the minutes from April 1st on the 2024 public hearings. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2024 Board of Education Public Hearing?
So moved, Mike Sharon, Hebrew.
Do we have a second?
Second, and Scott, so yeah, hand over.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that passes. So that brings us to the minutes from the April 1st, 2024 Special Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting?
So moved, Drew Golfen.
A second?
Second, Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, and the motion passes. Okay, 2024, 2025 Budget Updates and Reminders. It's enclosure 10.1. Colin, do you want to?
Yeah, I can speak to this a little bit, sure. So yes, as Heather mentioned, enclosure 10.1 is just a, it's really similar to what we put together last year, which we use to not necessarily promote the budget because we can't do that now. But we, it is used to inform members of the RAM community about our budget prioritization, kind of where we've come in, what we've done in order to get to where we currently are to 2.1%. So we have put this together. I did share it with members of the RAM community shortly after we had it finalized. And I also had copies of this flyer just delivered to the town halls of the, the three feeder districts. I felt it was important so that if members of the public came in, that they had an opportunity to access this information. And the last step that we're going to do is we are going to actually put this into the River East. We feel it's a good way to convey information to the budget to, to the general public because we know that it's not just members of the RAM community who would receive those emails from, from the district that will ultimately be voting on this budget. And, and again, I've continued to receive positive feedback on our budget and I feel like we're in a good place. We do have our budget, our district budget meeting. It is scheduled for May 6th at 6:30 here. Again, it should be a pretty brief meeting for those of you who have been through it in the past. It's, we just called the meeting to order. Basically, a moderator is identified and, and essentially the, the, the budget gets moved to referendum. The referendum is May 7th. And, and that's really what we, we would do on that evening is move the budget forward to referendum for the following day. I, I mentioned this to the board via email, but I, I was asked by some Marlboro folks, the Board of Finance Chair for Mike Nasty for Marlboro reached out to me. They, they actually have two public budget hearings. We, we have ours that we already had back in April. Marlboro, the town has two of them. They had one, I believe it was last week. And basically there were some questions about the, not just our district budget, but also the Marlboro Public Schools budget as well. And so they reached out to me and asked me if I could attend their next public budget hearing and do a very brief presentation, which I will be prepared to do. I'm going to be double booked to that night of May 6th. I'll be finishing up the, the meeting that we have here. Once the meeting concludes, hopefully, you know, 6:50-ish, I will hop in my car, shoot over to the elementary school in Marlboro and do a brief presentation and answer any questions that people have. Again, they just said that there's questions and I feel like I'd be the best qualified person to answer any questions that people had about our specific budgets. So, so that will be taking place. Obviously Marlboro has been a very supportive district, town for the RAM budget. And I'm hoping that we can maintain that support from, from them. So anything that I can do to, to help garner, garner that support, I'm happy to do it. And that's really it. If there's any questions or anybody from the board has any comments, but that's kind of where we are. I feel like we're in a pretty good place right now.
Colin, do you need, do you want anybody to go with you to that presentation?
It's completely, I, I know that when I did my presentation earlier to the Board of Finance, Amy was able to tell and misunderstanding. Drew was there in spirit and supported us, just a misunderstanding about time. But I ultimately would leave it up to, to members of the board. If, if you have the ability to follow me from here over to the elementary district. You know, certainly our Marlboro representatives have done that in the past and, and Hebrew people, you know, Gabe came and was supportive of, of the budget when I presented to Hebrew. And so I ultimately leave it up to people, but it, I, I think it never hurts to show the support by members of the board. So great if it could happen.
Great. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
We're talking about this document and I, I just have to point out that I, you know, I really think that we missed an opportunity by not calling the cheat sheet. No, it's great, this document's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the second read of policies. For policy 4118.5 and 4218.5, it's employee use of computers. Do I have a motion to adopt the policy 4118 or 4218, employee use of computers as presented?
I'll make the motion noting it, noting that it's 4118.5 and 4218.5.
Yep. Okay, so.
Scott, so yeah.
And then, thank you.
Second, Gabe Marks.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this policy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay, motion passes. That brings us to policy 6118, student use of district computer system. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 6118, student use of district computer system as presented?
So moved, Scott, so yeah, hand over.
Do we have a second?
Drew Golfen, second, Marlboro.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this policy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion passes. All right. Policy 4120, 4220, it's enclosure 10.2D. Do we have a motion to adopt the policy 4120, 4220, social networking as presented?
Heather, we missed, we missed one. We got to do 6200 first, alternative assessments for students with disabilities.
Oh, sorry, I scrolled too fast.
Okay.
Okay, so policy 6200, alternate assessments for students with disabilities. It's enclosure 10.2C. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 6200, alternate assessments for students with disabilities as presented?
So moved, Mike Sharon.
A second?
Second.
Second, Amy Romancheck.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, anyone abstain? Right, the motion passes. So now that brings us to policy 4120, 4220, social networking, it's enclosure 10.2D. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 4120, 4220, social networking as presented?
So moved, Drew Golfen.
A second?
Second, Joe Colletti.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that motion passes. Policy 4212, appointments, non-certified staff. It's enclosure 10.2E. Do we have, excuse me, a motion to adopt policy 4212, appointments, non-certified staff as presented?
So moved, Scott, so yeah.
A second?
Drew Golfen, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? All right, that passes. Enclosure 10.2F, policy 1424, fundraising. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 1424, fundraising as presented?
So moved, Mike Sharon.
Seconded, Drew Golfen.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? All right. Policy 6146B for deletion, pupil placement team exceptions to graduation requirements. It's enclosure 10.2G. Do we have a motion to delete policy 6146B, pupil placement exceptions to graduate requirement?
I'll move to delete, Scott, so yeah.
A second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstain? All right. Enclosure 10.2H, policy 6154.1 for deletion, summer coursework. Do we have a motion to delete policy 6154.1, summer coursework?
Motion to delete, Drew Golfen.
Second.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that motion passes. All right, so new business, enclosure 11.1 is the personnel report.
So I'll just, I'll just speak to this very quickly as, you know, the board knows we've moved into instead of, I'll accept resignations on behalf of the board moving forward and just report out information about either retirements or resignations. We have two resignations to share this month. Angela Banks, Latin teacher for the district, has resigned effective June 30th, 2024. Ms. Banks has been employed by the district since August 25th, 2011. And Janay Buchamp, math teacher for RAM Middle School, has resigned effective May 3rd, 2024. She has been employed at RAM Middle School since August of 2019. Certainly wish them both the best of luck with their future endeavors.
Are there any concerns? I mean, is there something we should be worried about that we have a math teacher and Latin teacher resigning?
No, no.
Ms. Banks has been my Latin teacher since the middle school center period. She's been my best teachers I've ever had. I love, just to wish her excessive luck. Yeah, as you said, future endeavors, just on behalf of Latin, just give huge appreciation to her and all she's done for us.
Yeah, they will definitely be missed for sure.
Is the math teacher position being held by a long-term sub?
Yeah, so, so we are, we are working to identify a long-term sub. We have, as recently as this, this afternoon, we are. It was definitely a concern with the resignation leaving, you know, at this point in the year. We certainly, what we have the ability to do, just so the board knows, is the general rule of thumb is that school districts can hold people for 30 days once they've submitted a letter of resignation. And, and we did do that in this situation. We have found ourselves in situations where if we're able to identify a long-term sub prior to that 30 days, then we certainly are not opposed to releasing the employee to the other district. But 30 days is the general understanding between superintendents for holding and it's calendar days, not school days. So, but like I said, we are, we're in a good place as far as finding a good quality long-term sub to finish the year.
I think Pam has a question.
Oh. Heather, Pam, yeah. Heather, Pam, yeah, Pam, go ahead.
It's not a question, really. It's just a comment. I, when I saw in the email today about Majestro Banks, I have to say, I was really taken aback. She was my son's Latin teacher through senior year. He took it from seventh grade to senior year and he is, she, my youngest son is now taking Latin with her. So I wish her the best of luck, but it's really, really a loss for us.
How difficult would it be to replace a Latin teacher if we decide we're going to?
It will not be easy. The, the, the number of people that are, I don't have the exact number, but the number of people holding a Latin certification is not abundant. Yeah, so.
Was, is Banks a world language teacher who taught Latin as one of her subjects?
So, so, so she has been, so she's, we're really fortunate with Angela. I'll echo all of her sentiments and I'll echo Pam's sentiments. She's been an asset to the district for sure. She is a Swiss Army knife of sorts and actually holds a dual certification. She's also certified as a, as an English teacher as well. And we've utilized her this past year, teaching both her Latin classes, but also teaching some, helping out and pluck some holes with regards to English instruction as well, which makes it a lot harder to find somebody because it's, it's pretty rare that you're going to have people with those dual certifications. So, but again, as I mentioned to the board, we'll, we'll talk about, you know, and talk about this and figure out what to do and discuss this next month's meeting. Heather, you want me to move on to the first read of policies?
Yes, that's enclosure 11.2A.
Guys, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
So the, the first one, 11, 11.2A, is reports of suspected abuse or neglect of students or sexual assault of students by school employees. This is one of those ones that is, we are just continuing down that road of trying to make sure that we update policies and that they are current with, with legislative language, with current legislative language. And so some changes were made based off of the fact that our policy, as it is currently in our policy book, is, is a little outdated. And so it's been updated to reflect current legislation. I can certainly do my best to take any questions that people may have.
This one's mostly a wording change.
Correct. Yeah, really nothing of substance. Just, yeah, correct. I'll just, I'll just keep moving on, Heather, if that's.
Keep going.
Thanks. So the, the next one, it's got a lot of pages to this one. Next one's, the next one's a little different. And, and so I'll, I'll explain to you our, what our current format is and, and the changes that I discussed with the policy subcommittee. So currently we have two separate policies that relate to bloodborne pathogens. And we have the one which is, which is solely a bloodborne pathogens, which is what you're seeing as the first page here. And there's some very minor language changes that are being made to this. We also though currently have a separate policy that is called, it's, it's literally the next policy in our, in our line of personnel policies, and it's the exposure control plan for bloodborne pathogens. So we have two separate policies, both really covering the same thing. And what we're doing based off of the guidance and recommendation from our, from our legal team, is we are merging these two policies. So we're going to have a single bloodborne pathogens policy. And what we're going to do is, the exposure control plan really should be the regulations associated with that policy. So we're, we're taking the two separate ones, we're merging them into a single policy. And, and, and so the administrative regulations that you will see starting on the second page, basically what we did was we took a redlined version of our existing, of our existing policy language. We applied it to this, and it's just been updated accordingly. So we're, we're really just trying to streamline things and minimize things. And I can certainly do my best to answer any questions that people have. The, the good news is, is that we are in compliance with what we should be doing. So we're really just catching our policy up, up with, with what we should be doing and are already doing. So.
So the one thing I noticed on this one was on the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth page, I believe, under section seven, reporting incidents, actually has its name. And so that would date this document if, if that person is no longer in the.
Well, that's a regulation, so we could actually change that. It's a regulation. So what we're doing is we're taking, so this is a regulation.
Right, right.
So, yeah, so it's a good thing that we're actually making it a regulation so we can update it.
You can update it anytime.
Yep, correct.
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't understand.
I don't understand how, so what Drew brought up is that there's personnel cited here who no longer work.
Yeah, so, well, that's one of the things we need to do is update it to the nurses that are currently at the middle school and high school. So it will be Lucy and Nancy.
So it is appropriate to have names, we just need updated things?
Correct.
In a regulation, and the policy's not.
Yeah, I mean, and we also could technically just say, should be reported to the school nurse.
Which I think was Drew's point, that you prefer it to be more generic so that it can have longevity.
There are a lot of legal regulations that we have to have names, but they can be in our regulations, not our policies, which he can just change.
Yeah, they can just change. The, the next one is a, is a pretty simple one. So as, our, our more veteran board members know, we, over the past year, we have updated our nondiscrimination policy for both students and for staff. That, that, we've already done that. We did that last year. One of the things that we don't have though, is we don't have a nondiscrimination policy specifically for community, the members of the community. And so what this is, we're basically, is we are, this would be adopting a brand new policy that would be nondiscrimination community. And this, the language of this policy lines up with the language of the one that we have for students, and it lines up with the one that, language that we have for staff as well. So again, that's why there's no red markings on this, is because it is literally a brand new policy that would be adopted.
Quick question.
Yeah.
I have not read that policy.
Okay.
Who is it targeting in particular?
It, it, it really, it could be anybody. So it could be a parent in the community who says, I feel I've been discriminated against. It could be any member of the public that feels that they've been discriminated against. Like, it could be a member of a, of a visiting team's fan base who's here and says, I had this experience and I feel it was discriminatory.
Gotcha. That helps with the perspective.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good, great question.
Yeah.
After school, though?
Correct.
Okay. Not just like.
Yeah, 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 no, no. No, it's, it's, it's different. I mean, students, technically, discrimination can, the policy for student to student discrimination could be applied in outside of the, outside of the school. But yeah, it wouldn't be, hey, I saw you at a grocery store and this kid from Ram said or did this, and I feel it was like that, that wouldn't, that would be like, that's outside of our domain space.
I am wondering, I've been, I've just thinking about it just now, is some of these ones where we have these triple policies, community, students and staff, how many of them could be combined with, you know, one paragraph for each separate, you know, all general stuff in one paragraph for each about, you know, disciplinary or whatever. I don't know. I mean, there may be legal requirements that we have certain ones and whatever, but it does feel a little redundant to have such similar language in three different policies.
I, I, I don't disagree with you about the redundancy. I, I'm being presumptuous when I say this, but I'm thinking that they want, because there's a community section for policy and there's a student section for policy. So that's, that's my, but I agree with.
Right. Well, I'm just wanting in general, not this, this one, all those places where we have.
I could cer, I could certainly ask.
It's, it's worth finding out because, you know, the smaller the policy manual, we can get away with, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is this, this is what we got from the attorneys?
Yes, it's their model policy. And it matches, as I said, the policy language that we adopted already for students and for staff and for personnel.
Yeah, I'm just going with Mike's applicability. It's, the applicability part that you described is at the end of the first paragraph, which talks more about protected class discrimination versus scope. And that seems strange, because the scope doesn't say school-related functions, extracurricular activity, you know, that kind of thing. So it does leave some, as Mike points out, it does leave some room for kind of some ambiguity about this structurally. I don't know if that's something that's worth looking at. Because what you're talking about, you know, like the visiting team, that's right there at the tail end of this first paragraph. But under the section, it actually says, scope and applicability, it doesn't say anything like that, which seems really odd. Based on observations of our United States Congress, I've decided that legal stuff doesn't make sense most of the time.
This is very true. All right, the, the next one is for deletion, I think?
Yeah, it's 1126.
Yes, okay, 1126. So I want to make sure that, I, I, I state this very, very clearly. I am, by recommending this for deletion, I am in no way, shape or form recommending that we not allow citizens to participate and, and public comments be made at Board of Education meetings. To, to Scott's point exactly, when we find redundancy in places where we can eliminate redundancy, we can eliminate redundancy. And so this particular policy is, is covered in the, in the 9000s, which is the Board of Education bylaws, specifically 9134, policy 9134, that talks about the fact that board meetings have to provide an opportunity for citizens to participate in Board of Education meetings. So again, still will have every opportunity to do so. It's not going to change how we proceed in any way, shape or form. It's just, we're just getting rid of some of that redundancy. And, and I'll, I'll kind of segue that perfectly in. And I, I did give Heather the heads up about this. Prior to bringing it to policy subcommittee, I said, I'm not saying that Heather is the board chair or anybody, whoever the board chair is, would not be the spokesperson for the board. But in the 9000 series, specifically policy, policy 9210, that talks about the duties of the Board of Education Chair, has a much more detailed listing of the myriad of responsibilities that a Board of Ed Chair holds. And one of them is that they are the spokesperson for the board, the public spokesperson for the board. So again, not looking to take away any authority from the board chair, just trying to eliminate some of that redundancy when possible. So I can certainly try to take any other questions. But I, these were reviewed and discussed with the policy subcommittee. I think that was last week. And the policy subcommittee was, was supported moving forward with as presented. So if there's feedback that you have after this meeting, you can certainly communicate that to me. Otherwise, these will come as a second read to be adopted and/or deleted at our next meeting. All set, Heather?
Okay, um, that will take us to 11.3, Colin, the unanticipated facilities needs.
Yeah, and, and I'll start this off. And I think Mike Schleyhoffer is in the meeting. And I know Eva is a part of, has been a part of this conversation as well. So I will allow, I'll ask them to, to jump in if I misspeak in any way, shape or form. So over spring break, we had some pretty bad weather. We had a day where some pretty substantial rain ended up happening here in district, and we had some leaky windows. And essentially, there was, I think it's five windows out of a total of 12 that were put in at the same time period where the flashing needs to be replaced on these windows. So we have to move forward with replacing these five, because we risk incurring damage if we don't fix these five. But the recommendation from Michael Schleyhoffer, our facilities director, was, well, we have these other seven windows of this set of 12 that, that while we're replacing the five, let's make the investment proactively and replace the other seven as well. And so the total cost for all 12 windows would be a total of $30,271 to replace those. I, I think that accurately captures things. All right, good. I'm getting a nod from Eva. That's always good. The, the next thing, I, I'll do my best to explain as well. So right now, we have elevators in the, in the building, and they have traditional landline phones. And the company that we work with to service our elevators is getting away from...
Nope. All right, you want to take over?
Michael can probably do a better job if Michael's on. Do you want to explain this, Mike?
Yeah, sure. So, um, so the FCC is deregulating the copper phone lines. So frontier communications, basically, there's a provision now where they don't have to maintain the lines anymore. So moving to a voiceover IP, internet-based phone line would allow us a better, what's the word I'm looking for?
Reliability?
Yes, reliability. Thank you. So, but the, there's a catch to it. They have to be main, not maintained, but they have to be monitored. And so this device, the $33,000, is installing monitoring devices on all four elevators with visual and audible monitoring so that if the phone line or the internet-based phone line goes down, it's able to notify individuals within the building that that elevator, the phone is down, not to use that elevator. I hope I summed that up.
Any, any questions about that?
I had a question. And maybe it's answered here, maybe not. I was wondering about the, you know, we said it's no longer required to maintain a line. We're not talking about the lines in the building to the elevator. We're talking about the external lines in the, in the roads or what?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
That's, that's what I hadn't understood reading this. So they weren't maintaining our, our, our elevator lines. They were just bringing the service to us.
Correct. And they're, they're no longer required to maintain, maintain those lines. Therefore, and we've experienced reliability issues with them in the past. So this is kind of a, a push in the, pushing us in the direction that we need to go in anyway. So.
Yeah. I have a second question about the, if the power goes out, is, I don't, is the new generator going to cover everything? It's 100% of what we've, we've got are things that would go down. And if so, would the internet be part of that?
Currently, all the telecom closets are on battery backup and emergency generator.
Okay.
So the new generator will cover all of those, those systems?
So somebody stuck in an elevator still has access to, that's.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions about this particular one? Otherwise, I'll maybe just be smart and ask Mike to talk about the third one.
Yes.
Mike, do you want to just talk a little bit about the LED lighting around the system or on the?
Yeah, sure. So this would be, so the LED lighting, so 95% of the building's upgraded. A big portion of this, there's a two-by-two fixtures. There's actually two in the media center that you're in there now, that are in there that are actually fluorescent T8 bulbs due to the fact that when they did the lighting project, that the fixture, not the fixture, but the bulb to replace for that fixture, the cost was just not there. So the two-by-two fixtures were not updated to LED, and they're still T8 ferrosense with mercury in them. What else? There is also the can lights that are throughout the high school hallways. There's like a total of 370. Those lights are on 12 plus hours a day. They're the original, I want to say generation one LED lights that are in those can lights. They're failing. The dil loads are going out of them. So we're looking to replace those. And we're also looking to replace the 27 battery-powered backup lighting fixtures that are in like your single-use bathrooms. that currently now, like when one of those batteries fail, we have to hire an electrician to come in and change due to the complexity of, of the wiring for that, those devices. These new panels would be one-for-one changeout replacements. Simple in-house maintenance would, would take care of the replacements for them. And then I've also looked at energy cost savings with the panels alone. Looking at, not a lot, but like $4,200 a year. And based on electricity rates going up, savings would just increase. Are there any questions around?
Question for you, where would the money be coming from for this?
So we're utilizing funds that are realizing savings in the lines.
Say again, please?
They're, we're going to be utilizing object codes that have savings in the lines. So there's money available.
In the current year's budget?
Correct.
Correct. Sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, so this, this was, you know, this is just investing money now so that we don't have to spend money in future budgets. I mean, that's, that's essentially what, this is either reducing capital budget expenditures down the line or if we don't fix these additional seven windows, it's going to, it's going to, you know, that could become an operating budget thing if, if we get an nasty rainstorm and the flash and goes. You know, and, and, you know, we've, we try to be good stewards of our financial, you know, of our finances. And I think that we've done a good job with that. Obviously, the board recently, you know, made the decision to, to do some, not pre-purchases, but again, make some investments this year where, with our good financial position to reduce budget requests down the line. And that's real, this, these things are falling in line with that. And, and so I think it makes, it makes good use, it's really good use of our money. There's no action that the board would need to do this evening because we would do the transfers during the May meeting. So at our next board meeting. So really, this is just informational purposes. If there was questions or concerns that the board had with us moving forward with this, then I guess now is the time to voice those questions or concerns. But again, if, I, I'm not sensing that that's the case. Just move forward with the projects and then Eva would have the transfers, just be a part of all the transfers that happen next month.
I would just add that this is not a, a new practice that the administration and the board has endorsed in the past. So this is something that we've done year over year. It's an effective use of surplus funds or available dollars to offset future budget needs. So typically, the board has met it with, with a positive reaction. I encourage you to ask questions as we go.
Okay, so there's no other questions on that? Eva, do you just want to go into the financials?
Sure. Okay, so 11.4A of your enclosure is, is the net favorable position currently as of March 31st, 2024. There's a projected net favorable position of $791,337. As of this month, Medicaid and interests are trending higher than budgeted. And I'm also projecting that the rentals will surpass what we anticipated the budgeted amount would be. This will help offset the cost, offset the loss that we're experiencing in the excess costs due to the projection by the state in having high-cost specialized students withdrawing from our program. The expenditures, I currently had everyone review their open purchase order reports to let me know if they would need increases, decreases, or if they needed to be closed so that next month I can give you a more favorable, favorable report. So we have a better position, a more precise position. The Capital Improvement Fund is focusing on the central office rooftop unit. There currently is no update yet. We were waiting for the unit to be delivered. It was ordered, we're just waiting for it to be delivered. The facilities concession, condition assessment has been completed. We are awaiting the report, which can take up to eight weeks to do, so we're almost there. And the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, we are focusing on the Phase 1 of the field improvement and drainage projects. We're just awaiting the finalized contract and we're going to be having further discussions this week with the proposed vendor. And Pupil Services is continuing to review their individual purchase orders for their students to make sure that everything is caught up to date with their IEPs and all of that. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this moment.
I have one. I talked about my new guy card, it's probably getting, getting a little used now, a little worn. But the objects, was it 210? Yeah, the employee benefits, retiree payouts.
So that is per contract. It's negotiated both in the certified and the non-certified unions. They're allowed a certain percentage of their sick day payouts. So if they have sick time on the books, they're allowed a certain percentage of that to be paid out. And the teacher, the certified salary one, our certified contract has one that they grandfather people in. I don't remember the wording on that one, but that was also, that, there's a few people left on that one. But so when someone retires, we owe them money when they're, they're leaving.
Okay, but it's, it's, it's a one-time, it's not a continuing thing for people who have retired.
So there is, so the grandfather clause is, it's a three-year payout, I feel, it's for three years for those people. So, but there's, I think there's only one more left in the district. And I feel like we may have paid off everybody else before they retired. I had to double check that.
Okay, but it is the vacation time stuff. It's not, I mean, it sounded like it was healthcare stuff.
No, no, it's not their health insurance. Health insurance, they pay 100% once they retire.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So what were you seeing in those figures?
So Object Code 210.
In the detail?
Yeah.
Okay. So I had a question. On the year-to-date spending, looks like in the last month, we spent about $2.5 million. But our encumbrances only went down about 2.3. So I was wondering if some of this stuff got in the encumbrances?
Yes, because one of them, for sure, I needed, Michael needed to be able to add one in so that we can hold the date in June for them to come do it. But as I told Colin, if the board was really adamantly opposed to it, we would reverse it all and cancel the purchase order.
So that's about $100,000. The encumbrances only down, are down...
So people are still purchasing, so it's not just these items. A lot of people are still purchasing and we're still moving forward.
So, but they, there's, I'm talking about the encumbrances? So you're hearing, and I'm trying to understand how it all works. You're hearing in the month purchases that are, might be open or something, and they're continuing to purchase. And then you hear about it and it becomes an encumbrance? How does that work?
So in order to purchase anything in the district, you need a purchase order. So the person, the department head goes into the financial system and puts in a requisition. That requisition gets converted to a purchase order. That purchase order becomes an encumbrance until it is paid out.
Okay, all right, excellent.
All right, moving on to 11.4B, the food service monthly sales and expenditures. Currently, we're experiencing a loss of $84,122.05 for the fiscal year. However, there is still a fund, a positive fund balance in the food service fund that is going to carry us. Next month, the Witten's District Manager will be with us because as part of our contract and the state of Connecticut required, well, the federal government requires it, but the state enforces it, that Boards of Ed need to renew a contract. So this will be our final year and then we'll have to go out to bid for a new contract for, with either a new vendor or the same vendor. But there's a process that goes into place. So John Purnier will be coming to speak to you all so that you understand what Witten's is, how they help us and, and what their projected budget for next year will be.
Every two years?
Every year.
Every year, okay. That explains why I remember.
Yes. Repetition. Are there any other questions on that? Oh, one thing I forgot to mention. So we're actually, so the state of Connecticut is looking at formalizing composting as a unfunded mandate, I guess, for school districts again. So we actually, in the process, have reached out to one of the vendors who handles this. And they're relatively inexpensive. So we're doing a trial run now for composting in back of the house. So it's going to be the kitchen, whatever they're doing. So in essence, Drew brought this up last month, was to see about food waste. That'll help us better gauge to see how the waste is going in the back of the kitchen. All right, moving on, 11.4D, short-term investment fund. So we've reinvested dividend of $1,643.91 for the month of March. Again, attached is all the documentation that has been asked prior. So I have provided what has been asked. Are there any questions that anyone might have from the short-term investment fund?
Just a comment that I think I made before, which is that that last page, I think, is detailed that I certainly don't need. I can't imagine anybody else does, is daily annualized rates of, of our investments. Every, every day for the month, what, you know, what was a factor and, so.
Well, the reason that was instituted, there was a time when that was changing daily by a significant amount as we were going into COVID.
Yep.
And so that was the reason that that was created. I think it's just been carried forward.
Yeah, I mean...
I just print it off of their website. I don't do anything for it. I know it's an extra piece of...
Yeah, I mean, and it's online for me, it doesn't really matter much, but it's just details that, oh, that again, yeah. I mean, I still scan it, I still look at it, I mean, look, range from between 5.41 and 5.44 daily. It seems silly. That is also not a big deal.
All right, so if those are all the questions, moving on is 11.4E. So as part of the projects, we went out to bid for the Athletic Fields North 316 of the Properimitative Drain Project. Based on the facility subcommittee and conversations with the vendor, the cost of, the total cost of the project is now known. We have to add 10% contingency. So basically, required for the project, we need $467,354. Currently available for that project in that line was $451,205 for a shortfall of $16,149. So I need the Board of Education to consider moving $16,149 from the capital non-recurring unallocated into the Athletic Fields project so that we can cover any contingencies that might arise.
I'll make the motion that we do so.
Second, Gabe Marks.
Any discussion on that?
So I did have a question, I talked to Colin about it. So we went with 12-inch HDP pipe. And why was that? What was the logic going from the 8 to the 12?
Well, it's forward-thinking with regard to capability in the future. The, the discussion was fairly frank with regard to the package that was prepared when the referendum went around the first time around for a synthetic surface. There was a lot of extras that were identified as being included at that time. And the vendor that did propose to us was very familiar with that. And the statement he made was that he knew it was going to fail going in. I anticipate in the future, although we're committed to repairing our natural surfaces, that someday there, there will be the desire to upgrade the surface to a synthetic because then it's all use all the time, there's no wear and tear, there's no recovery time. And so if that's done piecemeal, a piece at a time, it can be done in a more affordable manner. So, so the logic behind the decision was there. It, it made sense for us to go ahead and upgrade. And it really wasn't for a, a significant increase. I think the total was about $50,000.
Yeah, I remember like 54 or something.
I, I will say that some of the other vendors came in at, at numbers that were astonishingly low for that. The vendor in particular that, that we ended up selecting did an extremely good job of describing why the cost was what it was. It's not just a matter of digging a bigger hole, right? You've got to locate, move the drain system further from the track. You've got to have more, more removal, more backfill, more stone, more, right, more pipe. So it was, it was a unanimous decision on the part of the, the, facility subcommittee to support the decision.
So the concern with it was cleaning, right?
Cleaning is something that may, yeah, that was one of the things that popped up because if you have an oversized system, you don't get the hydraulic pressure through the system and it doesn't self-clean. So occasionally, they will have to come in and just backflush the system, which is a capability, as I understand it, that'll be built into the system anyway, so. Does that answer your question?
Any other discussion on that? Okay, so all in favor of reallocating $16,149 from the capital non-recurring unallocated to the Athletic Fields project?
Aye.
Right? Opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that passes. So committee reports, facilities, safety, transportation, Mike?
Well, I really just kind of gave you the skinny on, on the update. But one thing that I will add to the discussion tonight is that we did have a kickoff meeting with the contractor, Van...
Van Zel?
Van Zel.
Van Zel.
Van Zel, who is going to be doing the emergency generator integration and oversight of the electrical engineering and design. So that was a, a good kickoff. We have worked with them before, they were involved with construction of RAM. And so they're, they're very familiar. And so things, and the other thing I will say is that that system is going to essentially double in size. It's a 500 KV unit now, it's going to go up to 1 meg KV and have the capability of operating all mandatory or necessary systems throughout the school so that it can be considered a, a local, regional shelter. So that also is ADA compliant, is, is built into that as well. There are some upgrades that are being performed to make sure that facilities are ADA compliant also.
ADA compliant for what?
Americans with Disabilities Act.
Right, for the...
It's not just powering things, there are some systems in the school that need to be upgraded to be ADA compliant. And so those are going to be upgraded as well. I can't tell you what they are though, because I don't remember. If you'd like to know, I can find out.
I'm just curious what that has to do with the, the power, actually the use of it?
In order to become a, an accepted facility?
Oh, okay.
You must be ADA compliant.
Okay, so not, 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 not the power itself, but the...
No, yeah, divorce the two, but one has to come with the other in order to be considered eligible to be a regional shelter.
Yep.
Sorry, I missed you.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
All right, so the Finance Audit Compliance and Insurance Committee is going to meet on May 9th. Is there anything else that they want to, anyone from the committee wants to add at this point? Negotiations?
Um, yeah, we met last week for the first time with non-certified staff, the custodians and secretaries. We'll meet again this week.
Yeah, so we're, we're running a kind of concurrent negotiation session. So the board may recall that this is a, our non-certified group is the one that was one group. They, they, they kind of went nine-month in one, one group and then our, our pairs in another group. So we did our, as Amy said, we did secretaries and custodians. We kicked that, kicked that session off last week. We'll kick it off with pairs on Wednesday night, I think. And then we'll just do concurrent negotiations and hopefully make some progress. Great?
Okay, policy?
I don't think Carrie's here, I don't know.
Carrie's not here. I, I, I think it's, we met last week, you, you see the results and the proposals today. And...
We do think we actually meet next on the 14th of May. The date's incorrect, but we'll, we'll be meeting in a couple more weeks' time.
Okay. And, you know, the, the damn new guys on that committee didn't ask quite as many questions this time, so. On to his next meeting and...
It was, it was a quick, it was a quick one. Much appreciated.
Okay, program and communication?
We haven't, we haven't met as a committee. We do have a meeting scheduled for May 9th and we will be...
May 9th, oh, I'm sorry, I see that here, okay. Um, and then Carrie's not on, right? So we won't, don't have a cave report?
Yeah, she's not on.
Okay. Okay, public comments. Hebron Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks... Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Okay. All right.
I'll play it to music.
All right, so Colin, you want to do the calendar of events?
Yeah, so a couple of things that I wanted to mention, actually, one of them is happening, I think, this Thursday night, which is the All-Town Jazz Concert. So for those of you who have never been before, what we do is the bands from the three elementary districts will actually come to the Auditorium at Ram, they will perform as well as our middle school band performs, and then our high school band performs, and then they do a number where they do everything together. It's awesome. So highly recommend, if you have never seen it, come on out on Thursday night to see the All-Town Jazz Concert. As Ava mentioned, junior prom's coming up, we're going to start, it's hard to believe, I think we're like eight weeks left, like it's, I can't believe we're nearing the end of school year. So a lot of the events that are coming up are like end of the year, honors recognition ceremonies, the different teams, the middle school will be doing their recognition ceremonies and award ceremonies, really, really good stuff. We do have our Get Out and Play Day coming up, I think that's the Friday before Memorial Day. Get Out and Play Day is something that the, was, school districts are mandated to do on or around that time period, and it's encouraging kids to be off of screens and getting outside, and they have taken the bull by the horns here at Ram, and they've created a committee, and they have all sorts of activities and stuff, and I'm just hoping that we end up getting good weather that day. We had, last year, I think, Eric, we had phenomenal weather the day that we had Get Out and Play Day, and so keeping our fingers crossed that it will happen again for us this year. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier on, just our Evening of the Arts is coming up on May 30th, and I did send that email about tickets, get back to us, let us know if you're able to attend, let us know about tickets, and the food is fantastic, I think it comes from Gina Breeze, lovely. So that's, that's all I have for calendar of events.
Okay, the student discipline reports?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are. I always, I always say this around this time of the year, and I guess it's an appropriate time to say, we talk about discipline reports, which is, we have eight weeks of school left, and I hope that our students make good decisions in these final eight weeks. We have proms, and we have a lot of things where sometimes poor decisions can be made, and I'm hoping that our students at the high school and middle school make good decisions over the last eight weeks and keep the numbers low on the student discipline report.
Is senior skip day still with them?
Just going to ask.
I think it is, yeah.
But it's not published?
Yeah.
Some schools publish it.
Yeah, no, no.
Gotcha. It just happens.
I think so. Yeah. I never participated in that kind of stuff, Mike, so...
Please.
It's that obvious, huh?
Yeah.
So anyways.
All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Anybody want to have a discussion over that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.